Make sure that two more of our colleagues come in here as soon as we start voting. What happened to the senators on that side? We will start off with Resolution Number 83-33 LS. The clerk can please read the title.
Resolution Number 83-33 LS, introduced by T. Ciata, Frank B. Ugin Jr., R.J. Respecho, relative to requesting the U.S. government to transfer Lot Opera Harbor Reservation B7 to the Government of Guam to be reserved in perpetuity for the future expansion of the Guam Veterans Cemetery and the Mossau Reservoir Conservation Area.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Ugin. Senator Ugin, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Respecho. Senator Respecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Resolution Number 83-33 LS, receive unanimous support. It is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 92-33 LS.
Bill Number 31-33, oh, sorry. Bill Number 92-33 LS, as substituted by the author and amended on the floor, introduced by T. Ciata, B.J.F. Cruz, an act to amend Section 2 of Public Law 32-176, relative to the survey and transfer of Guam Department of Agricultural Property to the Office of Veterans Affairs with respect to the boundaries of the Guam Veterans Cemetery and to appropriate the sum of $30,000 to the Department of Land Management to procure surveying services.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Ugin. Senator Ugin, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Respecho. Senator Respecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Bill Number 92-33, receive unanimous support. Bill 92-33 is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 90-33 LS.
Bill Number 90-33 LS, introduced by T.R. Munia Barnes, an act to appropriate Track, I'm sorry, an act to approve Track 9, Block F, Lot 14, Baragada, with an area of 10,49.75 square meters, as a suitable lot relative to effectuating a land exchange between the Department of Public Health and Social Services and the Chomoral Land Trust Commission for the purposes of constructing a foster care facility pursuant to Public Law 32-226.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Ugin. Senator Ugin, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Respecho. Senator Respecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Bill Number 90-33, receive 15 aye votes and is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 21-33 COR.
Bill Number 21-33 COR, as substituted by the Committee on Early Learning, Juvenile Justice, Public Education, and First Generation Initiatives, and amended on the floor, introduced by Grant T. McCready, an act to add a new subsection D to Section 5106 of Chapter 5, Title 19, Guam Code Annotated, relative to providing discretion in the automatic certification of minors as adults for certain crimes.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Ugin. Senator Ugin, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Respecho. Senator Respecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Bill Number 21-33, receive 15 aye votes. Bill Number 21-33 is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 31-33 COR.
Bill Number 31-33 COR, as amended on the floor, introduced by B.J.F. Cruz, an act to amend Section 26120 of Article 1, Chapter 26 of Title 11, Guam Code Annotated, relative to the inspection of tax returns and other information required to be filed or furnished by the taxpayer.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, nay. Senator Ugin. Senator Ugin, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Respecho. Senator Respecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Bill Number 31-33, receive 14 aye votes, one nay. Bill Number 31-33 is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 44-33 COR.
Bill Number 44-33 COR, as substituted by the Committee on Rules, Federal, Foreign, and Micronesian Affairs, Human and Natural Resources, Election Reform, and Capital District, and amended on the floor, introduced by James V. Espaldon, an act to add a new subsection H to Section 5201 of Article 2, Chapter 5 of Title 22, Guam Code Annotated, relative to the use of an individual's credit history in the employment process.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Ugin. Senator Ugin, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Respecho. Senator Respecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Bill Number 44-33, receive 15 aye votes. Bill Number 44-33 is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 64-33 COR.
Bill Number 64-33 COR, as amended by the author and the Committee on Finance and Taxation, General Government Operations, and New Development, and further amended on the floor, introduced by Tommy Morrison, V. Anthony Ada, T.R. Munia Barnes, T. Ciata, Frank F. Blas Jr., Frank B. Ugin Jr., B.J.F. Cruz, James V. Espaldon, Grant T. McCready, R.J. Respecho, Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr., Michael F. Q. Sinicalis, Mary Camacho Torres, N.B. Underwood, Ph.D., Judith T. Wampat, E.D.D., an act to add a new Article 3 to Chapter 40 of Title 5, Guam Code Annotated, relative to providing public broadband internet services at village community facilities.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Ugin. Senator Ugin, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Respecho. Senator Respecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Bill Number 64-33, receive 15 aye votes. Bill Number 64-33 is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 69-33 COR.
Bill Number 69-33 COR, as amended by the author, introduced by R.J. Respecho, N.B. Underwood, Ph.D., an act to amend subsection 12m of section 715, chapter 7 of Title 1, Guam Code Annotated, relative to the Guam Department of Education's use of Easter and Christmas breaks as make-up days in the school calendar.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Ugin. Senator Ugin, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Respecho. Senator Respecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Bill Number 69-33, receive 15 aye votes. Bill Number 69-33 is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 9-33 COR.
Bill Number 9-33 COR, as amended by the Committee on Finance and Taxation, General Government Operations, and New Development, and further amended on the floor, introduced by Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr., an act to adopt the rules and regulations relative to responsible alcohol server/seller training programs by amending chapter 2, Alcoholic Beverage Control Board, of Title 3, Guam Administrative Rules and Regulations, Business Regulations, by repealing and reenacting Section 11 of Public Law 32-1, 32-51, and by amending subsection B of section 3124.1 of Title 11, Guam Code Annotated.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Ugin. Senator Ugin, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Respecho. Senator Respecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. All right, who's going to be honest here and tell me whose phone it is? Senator Morrison? Why don't you raise your hand? Senator Espaldon? Bill Number 9-33, receive 15 aye votes. Bill Number 9-33 is duly passed by this, 33 is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 15-33. Yes, he pays, double.
Bill Number 15-33 COR, as substituted and amended on the floor, introduced by T.R. Munia Barnes, an act to amend section 41006 and subsections A4 and A5 of section 41004 of Article 10, Chapter 4 of Title 12, Guam Code Annotated, relative to eliminating the requirement that the Guam Housing Corporation appropriate a fixed amount of $500,000 from its annual operating revenue to ensure a reserve balance of the same at the beginning of each fiscal year, to amending the timeline with respect to the annual audit of the Housing Trust Fund to coincide with that of the Guam Housing Corporation's annual audit, and to clarifying certain provisions of a grant deed between the Guam Housing Corporation and Maeda Pacific Corporation.
Roll call. Wait, one moment, yes.
Madam Speaker, if I may, just because there was amendment made to section... Three, can we move for a technical amendment to have legal fix the title based on the amendments that were made? Because it wasn't 500,000, it was reduced to 250.
Oh, the title said 500...
We're amending the requirement.
What happened, legal counsel was here? So, it...
Instead of the word eliminating, maybe amending?
Okay, wait, I'm trying to... Amending...
Madam Speaker?
Yeah, relative to...
Point of order?
Yes, please.
Yeah, so Senator Blas pointed out another concern on another bill where the title doesn't reflect the body, so I, notwithstanding the House rules, I moved that we set Bill 15 aside and so that the legal counsel can make the correction and then we...
And do you know what the other one is too?
The other, well, we didn't get there yet, but it's Bill 70, Bill 70.
Well, the minds would just move both of them. So, then, notwithstanding the House rules, then, instead to set aside Bill 15 and 17, did you say?
No, Bill 70 in the registry bill, the title says to appropriate 150,000, but in the body of the bill, it says up to 150,000, so...
Okay, so we're going to set those aside for legal counsel then to review and then we'll, and corrections made and then we'll get back to it. Okay, so we'll move on then to Bill Number 81-33.
Bill Number 81-33 COR, as amended by the Committee on Appropriations and adjudication, introduced by Mary Camacho Torres, B.J.F. Cruz, R.J. Respecho, an act to amend subsection C of section 4405 and to add a new section 4406.2, both of Article 4, Chapter 4, Title 4, Guam Code Annotated, relative to mandating the use of an administrative law judge under the Civil Service Commission to clarifying certain functions and to establishing time standards and case management practices.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Ugin. Senator Ugin, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Respecho. Senator Respecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Bill Number 81-33, receive 15 aye votes. Bill Number 81-...
Bill number eighty-one dash thirty-three is duly passed by this body. Bill number fifty dash thirty-three, C O R.
Bill number fifty dash thirty-three, C O R. As amended by the Committee on Appropriations and Adjudication and further amended on the floor, introduced by R.J. Rispisho, Frank B. Uggan, Jr., an act to amend Section Eight One Two One A of Article One, Chapter Eight of Title Four Guam Code Annotated, relative to the annuity payments of certified registered or licensed healthcare professional or ancillary, ancillary service personnel employed by the judiciary of Guam.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada.
I.
Senator Tom Ada, I. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, I. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, I. Senator Blas.
Yes.
Senator Blas, I. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, I. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, I. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, I. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, I. Senator Munia Barnes.
Call her name again. Call her name again. Senator Munia Barnes, are you voting?
Senator Barnes, I. Senator Rispisho, I. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, I. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, I. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, I. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, I. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, I.
Bill number fifty dash thirty-three, we see fifteen ye votes. Bill number fifty dash thirty-three is duly passed by this body. Bill number forty-eight dash thirty-three. Forty-eight dash thirty-three. That's the order in which I have. Where? All right, if you don't give me a copy, I can't call it. Bill number fifty-five dash thirty-three, C O R.
Bill number fifty-five dash thirty-three, C O R. As substituted by the author, introduced by T.R. Munia Barnes, an act to approve the lease of lot number thirteen block num, number three, tract number one one four three, formerly lot one zero one two zero dash R seventeen, indebted of Guam between the government of Guam and the Palauan Community Association of Guam.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, I. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, I. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, I. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, I. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, I. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, I. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, I. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, I. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, I. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, I. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, I. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, I. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, I. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, I. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, I.
Bill number fifty-five dash thirty-three, we see fifteen ye votes. Bill number fifty-five dash thirty-three is duly passed by this body. Bill number forty-eight dash thirty-three, C O R.
Bill number forty-eight dash thirty-three, C O R. As substituted by the Committee on Health, Economic Development, Homeland Security, and Senior Citizens, and further substituted and amended on the floor, introduced by Dennis G. Rodriguez, Jr., R.J. Rispisho, James V. Espadona, T.R. Munia Barnes, Grant T. McCready, an act to expand the Department of Public Health and Social Services, DPHSS, Division of Senior Citizens Provision of Senior Citizen Center Services through the operation of a new Mateti Senior Citizen Center by authorizing the transfer of fifty thousand nine hundred dollars from the executive branch appropriations contained in the F Y. Twenty-Fifteen Budget Act, and to authorize DPHSS to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Ilokano Association of Guam for the operation of the senior center.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, I. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, I. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, I. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, I. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, I. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, I. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, I. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, I. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, I. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, I. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, I. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, I. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, I. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, I. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, I.
Bill number forty-eight dash thirty-three, we see fifteen ye votes. Bill number forty-eight dash thirty-three is duly passed by this body. Bill number seventy-three dash thirty-three.
Bill number seventy-three dash thirty-three, C O R. As amended by the Committee on the Guam U.S. Military Relocation, Public Safety, and Judiciary, and substituted by the author and amended on the floor, introduced by Tommy Morrison, Frank B. Uggan, Jr., Frank F. Blas, Jr., T.C. Ada, V. Anthony Ada, Michael F. Q. Siniklis, T.R. Munia Barnes, Judith T. Wampat, E.D.D., an act to amend Section One Two Three Zero Four and to add a new Section One Two Three One Four of Article Three, Chapter Twelve, Title Twelve, Guam Code Annotated, relative to strengthening public safety efforts through the integration of video security cameras within Guam's emergency reporting system.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, I. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, I. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, I. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, I. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, I. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, I. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, I. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, I. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, I. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, I. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, I. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, I. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, I. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, I. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, I.
Bill number seventy-three dash thirty-three, we see fifteen ye votes. Bill number seventy-three dash thirty-three is duly passed by this body. Bill number seventy-seven dash thirty-three, C O R.
Bill number thirty-three, C O R. As substituted by the Committee on the Guam U.S. Military Relocation, Public Safety, and Judiciary, introduced by James V. Espadona, Judith T. Wampat, E.D.D., Frank F. Blas, Jr., an act to amend subsection A of Section Nine Zero Point Nine Zero and subsections B one of Section Nine Zero Point Ninety-One of Article Four, Chapter Ninety, Title Nine, Guam Code Annotated, relative to detainee participation in prison industries and the use of funds deposited into the prison industry's revolving fund.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, I. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, I. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, I. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, I. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, I. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, I. Senator McCready.
Call his name again.
Senator McCready, I. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, I. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, I. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, I. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, I. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, I. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, I. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, I. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, I.
Bill number seventy-seven dash thirty-three, C O R. We see fifteen ye votes. Bill number seventy-seven dash thirty-three is duly passed by this body. Bill number seventy-nine dash thirty-three, C O R.
Bill number seventy-nine dash thirty-three, C O R. As substituted by the Committee on the Guam U.S. Military Relocation, Public Safety, and Judiciary, further substituted by the author on the floor, and further substituted by the author on the floor, introduced by B.J.F. Cruz, an act to add a new Section Nine One Zero Two to Chapter Nine of Title Six, Guam Code Annotated, relative to creating a category of privileged communications between victim and victim advocate.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, I. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, I. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, I. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, I. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, I. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, I. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, I. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, I. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, I. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, I. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, I. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, I. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, I. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, I. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, I.
Bill number seventy-nine dash thirty-three, we see fifteen ye votes. Bill seventy-nine dash thirty-three is duly passed by this body. Bill number twenty-five dash thirty-three, C O R.
Bill number twenty-five dash thirty-three, C O R. As amended by the Committee on Rules, Federal, Foreign, and Micronesian Affairs, Human and Natural Resources, Election Reform, and Capodoro District, and further amended on the floor, introduced by Mary Camacho Torres, an act to add a new Section Three One Zero One Point Three to Article One of Chapter Three, Title Sixteen, Guam Code Annotated, relative to enabling the registration of eligible voters incident to obtaining a Guam motor vehicle driver's license or a Guam identification card and a renewal of same.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, I. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, I. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, I. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, I. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, I. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, I. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, I. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, I. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, I. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, I. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, I. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, I. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, I. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, I. Speaker Wampat.
Come again.
Speaker Wampat, I.
Bill number twenty-five dash thirty-three, we see fifteen ye votes. Bill number twenty-five dash thirty-three is duly passed by this body. Bill number sixty-one dash thirty-three, C O R.
Bill number sixty-one dash thirty-three, C O R. As amended by the Committee on Higher Education, Public Library, Culture, and Women's Affairs, and of further amended on the floor, introduced by B.J.F. Cruz, T.R. Munia Barnes, Frank F. Blas, Jr., Tommy Morrison, an act to amend Section Two Eight One Zero Five of Article One, Section Two Eight Two Zero One, A Two A of Article Two, Section Two Eight Three Zero One A of Article Three, and Sections Two Eight, Two Eight Four Zero One B and Two Eight Four Zero Four of Article Four, all of Chapter Twenty-Eight, Title Seventeen, Guam Code Annotated, relative to allowing qualified non-immigrant aliens admitted into Guam under the compacts of free association to participate in student financial assistance programs for higher education.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, I. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, I. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, I. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, I. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, I. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, I. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, I. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, I. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, I. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, I. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, I. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, I. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, I. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, I. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, I.
Bill number sixty-one dash thirty-three, we see fifteen ye votes. Bill number sixty-one dash thirty-three is duly passed by this body. Bill number sixty-five dash thirty-three, C O R. Bill number sixty-five dash thirty-three, COR.
Bill number sixty-five dash thirty-three, COR, as amended on the floor, introduced by BJF Cruz, Frank F. Blas Jr., T.R. Munia Barnes, an act to amend section six six one zero two and six six one zero four point two of chapter sixty-six, title ten Guam Code Annotated, relative to allowing non-immigrant aliens who are admitted into Guam under the compacts of free association to serve in the civilian volunteer police reserve of the Guam Police Department.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan.
Yes.
Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas.
Yes.
Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Escaldón.
Yes.
Senator Escaldón, aye. Senator McCready.
Yes.
Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes.
Okay.
Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Rispisho.
Yes.
Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis.
Senator Sinicalis, pass. Senator Torres.
Yes.
Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood.
Yes.
Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Uggan.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Sinicalis, nay.
Bill number sixty-five dash thirty-three, receive fourteen ye votes and one nay. Bill number sixty-five dash thirty-three is duly passed by this body. Bill number one zero seven dash thirty-three, LS.
Bill number one zero seven dash thirty-three, LS, as amended on the floor, introduced by T.R. Munia Barnes, V. Anthony Ada, Frank F. Blas Jr., an act to appropriate funds from the fiscal year 2014 fund balance of the tourist attraction fund to the Guam Police Department for overtime compensation.
Okay, senators, in order, I guess, for everyone to follow, can you just rearrange the numbers of the bills? It'll be eighty-three before, I mean eighty-two before one oh seven and then one oh eight, and then eighty-three with one oh nine and one ten.
We go at eighty-two or seventy-three?
Oh, it's in the back, at the very back. That's the reason why.
The order?
Yes, reorder them. Eighty-two, one oh seven, one oh eight, and then eighty-three, one oh nine, and one ten. And then, of course, they've just brought back fifteen and seventy. Okay, so are we, senator? Can you get us, okay, it's coming? You don't have it at the end of your, can go down there and assist the senators? Raise your hand, please, those who didn't get any?
Yes.
All right, eighty-two and eighty-three.
Bill number eighty-two dash thirty-three, COR, as amended by the Committee on Municipal Affairs, Tourism, Housing and Historic Preservation, and further substituted on the floor, introduced by T.R. Munia Barnes, V. Anthony Ada, Frank F. Blas Jr., an act to appropriate funds from the fiscal year 2014 fund balance of the tourist attraction fund to the Guam Visitors' Bureau for deposit into the Guam Festback and Folklife Festival Trust account.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan.
Yes.
Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas.
Yes.
Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Escaldón.
Yes.
Senator Escaldón, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes.
Okay.
Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Rispisho.
Yes.
Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis.
Yes.
Senator Sinicalis, aye. Senator Torres.
Yes.
Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood.
Yes.
Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Uggan.
Speaker Wampat, aye.
Bill number eighty-two dash thirty-three, receive fifteen ye votes. Bill number eighty-two dash thirty-three is duly passed by this body. Bill number one zero seven dash thirty-three, LS.
Bill number one zero seven dash thirty-three, LS, as amended on the floor, introduced by T.R. Munia Barnes, V. Anthony Ada, Frank F. Blas Jr., an act to appropriate funds from the fiscal year 2014 fund balance of the tourist attraction fund to the Guam Police Department for overtime compensation.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan.
Yes.
Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas.
Yes.
Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Escaldón.
Yes.
Senator Escaldón, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes.
Okay.
Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Rispisho.
Yes.
Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, aye. Senator Torres.
Yes.
Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood.
Yes.
Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Uggan.
Speaker Wampat, aye.
Bill number one zero seven dash thirty-three, receive fifteen ye votes. Bill number one zero seven dash thirty-three is duly passed by this body. Bill number one zero eight dash thirty-three, LS.
Bill number one zero eight dash thirty-three, LS, as amended on the floor, introduced by T.R. Munia Barnes, V. Anthony Ada, Frank F. Blas Jr., an act to appropriate funds from the fiscal year 2014 fund balance of the tourist attraction fund to the Guam Department of Corrections for overtime compensation.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan.
Yes.
Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Escaldón.
Yes.
Senator Escaldón, aye. Senator McCready.
Yes.
Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes.
Okay.
Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Rispisho.
Yes.
Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis.
Yes.
Senator Sinicalis, aye. Senator Torres.
Yes.
Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood.
Yes.
Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Uggan.
Speaker Wampat, aye.
Bill number one zero eight dash thirty-three, receive fifteen ye votes. Bill number one zero eight dash thirty-three is duly passed by this body. Bill number eighty-three dash thirty-three.
Bill number eighty-three dash thirty-three, COR, as amended by the Committee on Municipal Affairs, Tourism, Housing and Historic Preservation, and further substituted on the floor, introduced by T.R. Munia Barnes, V. Anthony Ada, Frank F. Blas Jr., an act to appropriate funds from the fiscal year 2014 Hotel Occupancy Tax Surplus Fund for the Payment of Capital Needs of the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan.
Yes.
Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas.
Yes.
Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Escaldón.
Yes.
Senator Escaldón, aye. Senator McCready.
Yes.
Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes.
Okay.
Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis.
Yes.
Senator Sinicalis, aye. Senator Torres.
Yes.
Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood.
Yes.
Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Uggan.
Speaker Wampat, aye.
Bill number eighty-three dash thirty-three, receive fifteen ye votes. Bill eighty-three dash thirty-three is duly passed by this body. Bill number one zero nine dash thirty-three, LS.
Bill number one zero nine dash thirty-three, LS, introduced by T.R. Munia Barnes, V. Anthony Ada, Frank F. Blas Jr., an act to appropriate funds from the fiscal year 2014 Hotel Occupancy Tax Surplus Fund to the Guam Visitors Bureau.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan.
Yes.
Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas.
Yes.
Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Escaldón.
Yes.
Senator Escaldón, aye. Senator McCready.
Yes.
Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes.
Okay.
Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Rispisho.
Yes.
Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis.
Yes.
Senator Sinicalis, pass. Senator Torres.
Yes.
Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood.
Yes.
Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Uggan.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Sinicalis, pass. Senator Sinicalis.
Yes.
Senator Sinicalis, aye.
Bill number one zero nine dash thirty-three, receive fifteen ye votes. Bill number one zero nine dash thirty-three is duly passed by this body. Bill number one ten dash thirty-three, LS.
Bill number one one zero dash thirty-three, LS, as amended on the floor, introduced by T.R. Munia Barnes, V. Anthony Ada, Frank F. Blas Jr., an act to appropriate funds from the fiscal year 2014 Hotel Occupancy Tax Surplus Fund to the Hagatnya Restoration and Redevelopment Authority for operational needs.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan.
Yes.
Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas.
Yes.
Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Yes.
Vice Speaker Cruz, nay. Senator Escaldón.
Yes.
Senator Escaldón, aye. Senator McCready.
Yes.
Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes.
Okay.
Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Rispisho.
Yes.
Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis.
Apologies, Madam Speaker, point of order, we're on bill one ten third dash thirty-three.
Yes.
The copy that I have engrossed is, it identifies three hundred thousand dollars for the watershed hydraulic feasibility study, but the title still says for operational needs of the Hagatnya Restoration and Redevelopment Authority. So are we going to be having a technical amendment with the legal counsel to change the title to be? the title to be for the watershed hydraulic feasibility study? Just an inquiry, Madam Speaker. I mean, if that is technically an operational need, then I guess we can proceed, but I'm just curious if we should instead have the title read three hundred thousand dollars to the Hagotnia Restoration and Redevelopment Authority for the Hagotnia River Channelling and Watershed Hydraulic Feasibility Study?
Wait. Legal counsel. Because I know the money would have to go to HRA and then, of course, from them, then to pay for this particular study. Actually, it's the Guam portion. The study has been done already, or is being done, but that's the Guam portion. So, yes, Senator, so we're going to proceed with the Hagotnia Restoration and Redevelopment Authority. It'll go to them and then from them, because it's very specific to this particular project, so it should be able to go to them.
Senator Siniklis, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat.
I'm going.
Speaker Wampat, aye.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Which one is this one for? I'm just, oh, the, oh, no, that's no.
Speaker Wampat, nay.
Bill number one ten dash thirty-three received thirteen a votes and two nay votes. Bill number one ten dash thirty-three is duly passed by this body. Bill number fifteen dash thirty-three C.O.R.
Bill number fifteen dash thirty-three C.O.R. As substituted and amended on the floor, introduced by T.R. Munia Barnes, an act to amend section four one zero zero six and subsections A four and A five of section four one zero zero four of article ten, chapter four of title twelve Guam Code Annotated, relative to amending the requirement that the Guam Housing Corporation appropriate a fixed amount of five hundred thousand dollars from its annual operating revenue to ensure a reserve balance of the same at the beginning of each fiscal year, to amending the timeline with respect to the annual audit of the housing trust fund to coincide with that of the Guam Housing Corporation's annual audit, and to clarifying certain provisions of a grant deed between the Guam Housing Corporation and Maeda Pacific Corporation.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, nay. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, pass. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, nay. Senator Eschwaldon. Senator Eschwaldon, pass. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat.
No.
Speaker Wampat, nay. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, pass. Senator Eschwaldon. Senator Eschwaldon, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye.
Bill number fifteen dash thirty-three received twelve a votes, three nay votes. Bill number fifteen dash thirty-three is duly passed by this body. Bill number seventy dash thirty-three.
Bill number seventy dash thirty-three C.O.R. As substituted by the Committee on Appropriations and Judication and further substituted and amended on the floor, introduced by N.B. Underwood, Ph.D., R.J. Rispisho, an act to add a new section seven two one zero nine to chapter seventy-two of title ten Guam Code Annotated, relative to the creation of an emergency online registry for individuals with special needs and to appropriate up to one hundred fifty thousand dollars from the fiscal year 2015 unappropriated fund balance of the Enhanced 911 Emergency Reporting System Fund to the Guam Fire Department as a start-up cost.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, nay. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, nay. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, nay. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Eschwaldon. Senator Eschwaldon, nay. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, pass. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, pass. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, pass. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat.
I'm going.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, pass. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, nay. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye.
Bill number seventy dash thirty-three received ten a votes and five nay votes. Bill number seventy dash thirty-three is duly passed by this body. On the nomination of William M. Castro to serve as the Director of the Bureau of Statistics and Plans, roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Eschwaldon. Senator Eschwaldon, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Would it be a conflict that he was my employee? Yes.
Speaker Wampat, aye.
At least I disclosed it. What? That you call a conflict as I voted yes? On the nomination of William M. Castro to serve as the Director of the Bureau of Statistics and Plan, he had received fifteen a votes. He is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Dr. Ryan M. Claris, DTP, to serve as the physical therapist representative of the Guam Board of Allied Health Examiners, all in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, Mr., Dr. Claris received fourteen a votes and is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Dr. Lisa Cooper Nurse to serve as the school principal, administrative member of the Guam Commission for Educator, all in favor, please raise your hand. Dr. Cooper Nurse received fourteen a votes and she's duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Shelley V. Calvo to serve as a member of the Guam Visitors Bureau Board of Directors, all in favor, please raise your hand. Shelley V. Calvo has received fourteen votes and she's duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Cassily E. Kraft to serve as an archaeologist alternate of the Guam Historic Preservation Review Board, all in favor, please raise your hand. Cassily Kraft has received fourteen a votes and she's duly confirmed by this body. Senator Rispisho, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move that we adjourn subject to the call of the speaker.
We are then going to adjourn subject to the call of the speaker.